April fourteenth. And I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Kinghorn that counsel adopt the agenda for this regular council meeting, April fourteenth, as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have the motion?
Thank you. All in favor? Okay. Adoption of previous minutes, I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that counsel adopts the March twenty-fourth regular council meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have my motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay. Two delegations today. The first one is from Northback and Mike Young and Dana are here to present. Straight up to the... Just Mike, Dana? Yeah, you're not going there? Okay.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
It is now.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. Thank you for accepting our offer. It's very pleasant weather you've put on today, which is great. But it'd be good to get more rain, of course. What I wanted to talk about today briefly was just, you know, the issue that people are worried about. And just to talk a little bit about selenium management and how some of the technologies that we are looking at. It's really important to stress that there is no mine application before the regulator currently. We know that the projects had a long history. It went through a regulatory process previously. But currently, the only application before the regulator is for a small drilling program, which has already gone through a public, through a public process and is awaiting a decision. So there is no mine plan currently before the regulator. So I think it's important to stress that because we're currently working on that mine plan. We haven't, you know, we've been pretty public about that. To improve the issues that arose from the JRPN from the concerns that we've heard from the public, and we've done a lot of public consultation, as you know. So that's important to stress because we are currently working through that. And when the time comes to submit another application, that's the time when we'll be able to really talk in a lot more detail about that particular design and what we've done to sort of improve some of the issues, but also to manage some of the emissions issues that people are concerned about. But what we did want to do, because we do hear that people are concerned about selenium, we just wanted to do a brief presentation specifically in that area. And this is really about the selenium processes that are available to us. This isn't what we are doing specifically because, as I say, a new mine, a new application is not before the regulator. So I just want to really make that clear. But I'll endeavor to answer your questions as clearly as I can, given that limitation today. Absolutely. If you could move to the next slide, please. I'm sorry for the writing is a bit small. I assume you'll be putting this, making it available online. When you look at selenium, it's really important that you manage it at the source. And this was something that came up in the Lethbridge meeting the other day where the engineers, the city's water engineers made that comment. And that's really important. There are many sources of selenium in the watershed, including agriculture, human waste management, and also mining. And so it's important that we, as a company, manage selenium at the source. And... Dana, do you have a copy of that? Do you have a presentation with you?
No.
Can you excuse me just for a sec? I'll have to bring it up. I need my glasses. Sorry, but I did apologize. Oh, that's better. So I'll give you a bit of background. Selenium. So selenium is naturally occurring. It's called a metaloide. It exists in rocks and soils in many regions around the world, and in particularly in the Rockies. And it's also where mining takes place, in the Rockies. So you're getting natural erosion of the Rockies, natural ingress of selenium into the rivers, just through the fact that the mountains do contain rocks that contain selenium. However, when you're mining, the rocks are broken up. And so what happens is there's more surface area of the rocks. And that's why we grind our coffee, for example. And so what happens is because of that, you can accelerate the creation of this selenium, the soluble selenium that can go into the water. And so that can be released into soils and waterways over time. The way that we manage selenium, it's not just a one-stop shop. You just don't, you know, pop down to Canadian Tire and buy it off the shelf. It's actually a, what we call a multiple lines of defense system. And one of the advantages we have is because this mine is reopening an old mine, we're starting with new science. And...
Sorry, Mike, can you just bring that mic a little bit closer to you? This isn't the greatest sound system in the world.
No, it's on me.
The one with, whatever one's got the red light on is the one we need.
Is that better?
A little bit better? Yeah, as close as you can speak to the mic is great mic. Hello for the mic.
Sorry about that. That's right. So as I was saying, because we are proposing to reopen the old grassy mine, the technology we'll be using is all state-of-the-art, modern technology. And as with any industry in the last fifty to a hundred years, there's been a lot of improvements in science and understanding in everything that we do. So we have this multiple lines of approach, which means because you know what rock contains the selenium, you can manage that in the first place. So how you mine the rock and how you store it becomes important in your mine design. The second thing is that the selenium is generated when oxygen comes into contact with rock, the oxygen that's in the air. And then that transforms the metaloide into a compound that's actually easily soluble in water. So it can be carried away by the rain. So the oxygen is critical. And so if you are able to store the rock in a way that prevents oxygen from moving through the rock, by the way that you design what we call the landforms, we used to call them waste dumps, but we don't anymore. So with these landforms, if you can design them in a way that prevents air from flowing through them and water from flowing through them, then what you've effectively done is you've stopped the selenium generation at the source. And that's called source control. And that is a modern way of managing, well, any emission from any industry. You really want to stop it at the source. It's one of the reasons that we have clean fuels now. Same thing. Secondly, another method that you use is what we call progressive reclamation. And the idea there is that you want to, as you're mining, think of it as moving through the deposit from, say, south to north, east to west, whatever way a deposit is sitting. And so what you would do is as you're mining, you want to put as much of the material back into the holes as you can, the open pits. And as you do that, it allows you to start your reclamation process immediately. And that's really important for a lot of reasons. One is it just makes good economic sense because it means that you don't have this liability at the end of your mine life. It also means that you can actually manage and get your reclamation going sooner. And that also helps you manage water. And water's key. And so the more that you've reclaimed the land back to a landform that is not just a waste dump, but you've covered it with soil and trees, if that's what people want, or whatever the people in the area would like to see. When you do that, that progressive reclamation, it means that you're also managing selenium because you're covering the waste. So that's a really important part of how you do it. The other thing you do is you need to manage the water on site. So the water that comes into contact with the mining areas, whether it's the landforms, or the pits, or the trucks, or the roads, that's called mine contact water. It's pretty self-explanatory. And that's the water that you have to capture through your water management. And so what you do with that water is you capture it, you store it, you then test it, and if necessary, treat it before you release it. And so it's really important to also understand that with water, mining is not what we call a hundred percent consumptive loss. So you're not losing all the water. Some of the water is recycled through coal processing. Some of the water is used for dust suppression. But a lot of the water will be returned back into the waterways. And so before you can do that, the water has to be tested, and it has to meet the regulatory standards that the government will set for us, not just for selenium, but for all the emissions. So the main ones, when you're looking at mining, are selenium nitrates and what we call total dissolved solids or silt. You know, you don't want the water being cloudy. And one of the things we have done and we have made public is that Grassy Mountain is a ridge, and so it has a water divide going up the ridge. So the water, if it falls on, will go one of two ways. It'll either go towards Gold Creek or towards Blairmore Creek, both of which flow down into the Crowsnest River. What we've done is the design will not dump any waste rock, which, as I've said, generates the selenium. None of that waste rock will be put into the Gold Creek watershed. And the reason Gold Creek is special is it's actually a critical habitat under federal law. And it has a relatively pure strain of West Slope Cutthroat trout in that creek. So that creek is really special, and we're aware of that. And so we're doing everything we can to either eliminate or mitigate that risk in the Gold Creek watershed. And those are commitments that we've made public several times in the past, and we're always happy to provide that to the council. We'll also, we've also been monitoring water and air for a long time. So we have what's called baseline surveys. So you want to know what is the water quality today, and what's the water quality and the air quality around the mine today? Because there's lots of sources of dust and whatnot, and the water, although drinkable, isn't, you know, pure water. So we'll manage that. And what that does, that gives us a baseline to refer to when we start operations and we have to monitor the water downstream from the operation. So we've started doing that already. It's been going on for several years. We've put in weather stations in response to some of the comments from the joint review panel. So we have weather stations on the mountain to get data right on the mountain. And we've also put dust monitors downwind in the region. So that's, we're doing a lot of work in that area to really understand, you know, what is the baseline, what's the air today, so that we can monitor it tomorrow. And lastly, we're going to have to, if you can go to the fourth slide, please, and I'll come back to the third, I promise. So one more, please. Thank you. So what this is showing you is that selenium management is, it's a real team effort from a lot of advisors. We'll do a lot of test work and simulation, computer simulation. There's a lot of research going on in Canada, well, all over North America at the moment on selenium. We have the mining engineers who will design the mine. As I said, the mine design is really important in terms of source control. We've done a lot of drilling. We've done a lot of work on water and water modeling. So that's something else that will fit into this. And then there are a lot of proven technologies for selenium management in existence today, and they're being used around North America. And we often hear that you can't remove selenium from the water. Well, you can. And you have to achieve, but the important thing is you have to achieve the thresholds that are put to you by the government. It's no different than any industry that has emissions. They are given standards that they have to follow. And that'll be the same for us for all our emissions. And so that all comes together into a management strategy. And then that gets submitted to the regulator as part of the environmental impact assessment and the integrated application. So when you look at, for example, the drilling program, I know the council put in a statement of concern, along with a hundred and twenty-five other people, and then there were another forty-three statements of concern in support of the drilling program. That was a very robust process. You know, the drilling application was put in in August and September twenty-twenty-three. And so the regulator decided that they would take the drilling application through a public hearing. And I'm pretty sure everyone was tuned in to the hearings. And you would have seen that that process for, you know, a drilling program was pretty robust. The JRPP process previously was, I wasn't here for that one, but it was a pretty robust process. I've watched the proceedings, read the reports. And what's important, when you look at that drilling program, there are several points at which the public have a say and are heard. Whether the public decide to engage experts or not is really up to the proponents. But the point is, is that there's a lot of rigor, a lot of investigation, and that will be no different for this process. So if and when we're ready to put in an application, that'll go into the process, there's immediately public consultation. There's public consultation the whole way along. The AER zone scientists and the environmental scientists, they interrogate the documents and ask lots of questions. So there's plenty of science-based discussion around the applications. And also, we're committed to doing as much public engagement as we can as we move through this process. And, you know, if the council invites us to come back, we will. And then just going back to the third slide, and again, this will be, this is hard to read, but these are just three examples of many processes of selenium reduction treatment plants. So this would be your final line of defense, if you like. So you've gone through your source management, your water management, and then this is your treatment plant. And these are three examples from Elk Valley, Kanuma, the Brulee Mine in northwestern, northeastern B.C., and the Trend Mine in northeastern B.C. Another very good website that's worth looking at is called the North American Metal Council Selenium Working Group. So it's N A M C dot O R G. And this is a group of scientists from all over North America, not just in mining, but several fields. And these are selenium experts. They're toxicologists and biologists. And that's a website where they've put all of their, all of their research online. And there's some really good documents in that that's worth having a look at. And I'm happy to help filter that if you want. You can just say, hey, Mike, instead of me reading them all, which are the good ones? And I'm happy to do that. But that's a really good resource to have a look at. So if you're city engineers or other people are interested in that, it's really worth a look. And these are three that will come out. You can see the references in there, but there's some good white papers in there on the current state of selenium treatment. And then lastly, there were some good papers that were submitted to the coal policy review. And I can also dig those up and send you the references to those. They're online on the Alberta dot C A website. But, you know, they're kind of hard to find unless you know what you're looking for. So I'm more than happy to also provide that to the council. So that's really it. That's, I just wanted to give you a really high-level explanation on how we, the methods that we would look at for managing selenium. And then, as I say, as we move through the process, as we get more detail and more engineering and get it more refined, there'll be a lot more information available and information that we'll be sharing with the regulator and with the public.
Perfect. Thanks, Mike. And I want to, I want to say, you know, Mike reached out to me, well, it's about a year ago that we first met. And Mike came down with, and met with Michael Nychuk and I, and we had a good meeting. And you've been gracious to answer my phone calls. I've got your cell phone. We can text and everything else. So when I have questions and hear certain things, if I have questions, I appreciate you answering your phone and answering them for me. But we both know that, you know, I'm not going to convince you that Grassy Mountain's a bad idea. You're not going to convince me that Grassy Mountain's a good idea. That's just all there is to it. And, you know, the town recently met with Deputy Minister of Energy Wade Clark and his staff and some of the staff from Alberta Environment. And we had a, we had a good discussion here as well and, you know, put forth what the town of High River sees as a new coal policy or coal restriction policy. And I'm sorry, but it would mean you guys head home. It's a no. So there's not a lot that I see as, well, there's nothing that I see as a benefit to our province to go down this road and start this in southern Alberta. But you and I can debate that forever, Mike, and I'm not here to, I'm not here to, you know, really, really get into a big debate with you because my fight and our fight is far more with our provincial government and our premier Danielle Smith and the Minister of Energy, Brian Jean. That's where I've got major, major problems with. You're doing your job that you were hired to do. And, you know, I appreciate you coming all the way to High River. We're a long ways away. Well, not a long ways away, but we're not in the watershed that's going to be affected by the Grassy Mountain mine. I've told you before, my biggest concern is that if Grassy Mountain goes, they all start to come north. And once they come north, now they affect the Highwood watershed. So we're fighting it today so that that doesn't stop. But that being said, even though Grassy's down in southern Alberta, we're still Albertans, and that's still part of our land as well. And I do not see any amount of jobs or money that makes this worthwhile in any form that there's any positive outcome. So, but when we, you know, your presentation today and talking about selenium specifically, and yeah, that's the, that's the hot topic that's being discussed every time this comes up. But when you, let's go, you know, directly, go, or Grassy Mountain, you can't go into Gold Creek because there's a species at risk being the West Slope Cutthroats. So you're going to go into Blairmore Creek, which has a hybrid version of Cutthroats, which keeps it out of the species at risk. So there's a game being played there as to which watershed that you can affect. The problem is both of them go into the Crowsnest River, which goes into the Old Man, which continues down all the way to Hudson Bay. That's where the selenium affects. It's not just an isolated, oh, we stay out of Gold Creek, so we're good. No, no, no. It's all, it's all the same thing. You're just avoiding the species at risk piece that the feds say, like, you will never be able to get a application through if you're touching Gold Creek. But you're also, you know, talking about previous mines, you know, Elk Valley is the one closest to you and, you know, I'd call it a disaster of what's happened there because of the tech mines up the Elk Valley. Fernie is currently looking for new water wells. They're doing that today because of the selenium concentrations in the Elk River. And they're going down and they're looking up into Lizard Creek, which is, gets it upstream out of the watershed that's impacted by the tech mines. So, you know, when you say, when you say, yeah, we can, we're going to remove ninety-five percent or ninety-nine, ninety-four, you know, cool. But if, but if it's this much that affects aquatic life, you create this much and you reduce it to this much, you still got ten or twenty times more than what's safe for aquatic life. And one microgram per liter is what affects aquatic life. That's where it starts. Humans can take, take on, what, fifty micrograms? The ag, agricultural regulations say you can go twenty or thirty. Problem is, even though you're saying, yes, I can reduce it by ninety-five, that five percent or even a one percent is too much. And you can't remove all of it. And selenium, yes, it's a, it's a naturally occurring mineral, but too much of it is not good. Whenever I hear that, I go back to the early days before you were part of this, Mike, but good old Robin Gamble, when he sat there and said, well, don't worry, selenium's just... but good old Robin Gamble, when he sat there and said, well, don't worry, selenium's just salt. Go and eat a five-pound bag of salt and let me know how you turn out. Too much of it and too much selenium is not good. And that's, that's where we get, and you know, I'm not a toxicologist, but I'm more of one now than I ever dreamt of five years ago because of, because of all of this. So I'm not, I'm not understanding one thing that we, yes, the Elk Valley, Kanuma and Trend Mine, you know, those are existing treatment methods that aren't really, kind of working, aren't really working. Elk Valley, you know, tech, not tech anymore. Who the heck are they called now?
Glenn Core. Glenn Core. It's called Elk Valley Resources.
You know, part of their, part of their whole thing, you know, when you say, you know, you have to meet these guidelines, you know, you don't really. You just have to pay the fine when you get caught. And that's what's happening in B.C., right? These guys got a line item in their bud, in their budgets that is for paying fines, and they pay millions of dollars in fines. And but selenium bioaccumulates, and now we have the massive issue through Kukunosa and down into the States, and the States is wanting to sue us for it. So my solution is to deal with this selenium problem is to just not mine in the start. The way to keep this thing in check and to protect our aquatic life, our ag industry down south, to protect human life, our health, which is equally as important, I'm sorry, as the bugs in Blairmore Creek, is to just not do this project and don't start with Grassy. Because you and I, and you've said, well, don't worry, Craig, I don't think we'd see these mines going up and coming north. It'll be kind of grassy and done. I do not believe that one bit. I do not trust Gina Reinhart, your boss. One iota that she's only in it for this mine because it's not big enough for her. She wants more. And once the infrastructure is in place and the Crow's Nest Pass, she will want every 10 cents that she can squeeze out of that investment in infrastructure. The loadout, the rail, the spur line you got to build. I'd love to talk to you as to where, when I drove through there yesterday, I was like, where are they putting that thing? But anyways, all that, that's millions of dollars in just infrastructure that's going to be built there. You can't tell me that she doesn't have eyes on all these other mines that creep up, creep up north into Caninasca. So I could go on and on on that one. But where my, where my real fight is, is not with Northback. It's not with Mike Young. It's not with Gina Reinhart. And I'll extend the invitation. If you want to bring Gina here anytime, I'd love to meet her. So we can do another delegation. So my brother lives in Perth, so maybe I'll stop by your house if I ever get to go visit him. The other, the other piece is just my trust level in this whole gong show that's, that, and I know how much Brian Jean loves to chuck the NDP under the bus. They did absolutely nothing. But it's, it's our current Alberta government, the UCP government, when Jason Kenny got in, that created this gong show that we see today. They're the ones that tore that 76 coal policy up and opened up a can of worms that they're trying their best to close now, and it ain't happening. We will not let it happen. And Brian's latest piece is that, well, there'll be no mountaintop removal. We're not doing that kind of stuff anymore. That is the biggest load of BS in this province right now in my mind. Well, there's lots of it, but that's a big one. Because Grassy is exempt from all of those new rules. So the project that you are working on is going to be a full-blown, and put whatever name on it you want, mountaintop removal, open pit, high wall mining, it's all the same thing. You're digging a great big pit. You're removing overburden. You're piling stuff up. The rain's going on it, and it's going in the rivers. Period. You can't avoid it. You're not mining if you're, if you're not doing that. But so, you know, my, my fight isn't, my fight isn't with Northback or our fight as council and when the whole group gets involved. And it's the, it's the serious lack of trust that I have in, in our premier and in our Minister of Energy. They are absolutely hell-bent on making this happen. And it's beyond horrible in my mind that they, that they want to go down this road as our Alberta government, that they want to take us down here. But it's, it's a trust thing, you know, what was that, four years ago, three, four years ago, that, you know, when Danielle was still on the radio and not in politics, her and I got into it on their, on her radio show, arguing about, about Grassy Mountain. And she was, said it straight up, something needs to happen and there needs to be a balance. And that was, and we've had numerous talks about it. She wants this to happen. Brian Jean was put into place because she knows that he'll do as he's told and do everything he can to make it happen. And that's been very apparent since December 20th, when he made his first announcements. Cracking this thing up and ripping up the old ministerial orders and putting this smoking mirrors snake oil pitch on this. No open pit, no mountaintop removal. It doesn't exist, dude. But the other one that I really love is that when Danielle put Mr. David Jaeger into being the head of the AER, who David and Danielle have always been pretty tight, he's now the head of the AER who has your application for exploration in the palm of his hands for a decision to be made in the next few weeks.
Yeah, so March 4th was the date of the, of the final hearings, and then they got 90 days from then. So, you know, sometime in June.
Sometime in June. So the other piece is, is that, you know, and I challenged Danielle when she first put David Jaeger in the position at the AER. I thought it was a real mess then, and it's even worse now because now we, now we find out that not only is David Jaeger the head of the AER, but he's actually on payroll with the premier's as a, what do they, what's it called? A special advisor to the premier. At $156,000 a year, he's being paid as a special advisor to the premier. Don't ever try to tell me that the AER is arm's length from the Alberta government. He's a, he's being directly paid from the premier's budget. It's unbelievable how anybody has any trust in what's going on. I don't, I don't get it that in this province, that we have a government that is willing to allow a foreign country, foreign companies, Australian, they're all Australian, to come in, blow up our mountains, pack them up, put them on trains, send them to Vancouver, and then to wherever the hell, across the ocean. China primarily, I think. I don't get that. The landscape destruction alone is where I stop. These are our mountains. These are our precious places. If we don't have our eastern slopes, we're nothing in my mind. Because it screws our water and then we're done. There's no royalties. You know, everybody thinks this is a big anti, anti-resource campaign that I, that we have, and it's absolutely not. The oil and gas sector operates in a vastly different world than the coal sector. I can't believe that there's not more people in the oil and gas sector that are as mad as I am about this because of the, how the Alberta government is handling this coal mining. They would never do this kind of stuff. Tear up ministerial orders and just throw rules out the door and run shredders. That would never happen in the oil and gas world. They don't get away with that kind of stuff. And I don't get it why the coal industry does. Like, I know some higher guys in the oil and gas sector, and they scratch their heads and wondering why, but they also don't want to poke the bear too much for their own needs. But going to the royalties, like, you know, Brian Jean said, well, we made $200 million in royalties last year, which is a, that number can be debated. It goes anywhere from 92 million to 200 million. But 200 million, let's say that's the right number, is pennies, absolute pennies. It doesn't do anything. Brian sits there and says, well, it pays, helps pay for everything. We get our healthcare and everything. Uh-uh. It's not even, it doesn't pay for the urinal pucks in this province. It doesn't. What have we got? A $36 billion budget? $200 million? Whatever. Most, most history in, in coal mining royalties is anywhere 40 to 60 million dollars in total royalties. I love this one that, when it came up, when they got rid of the, of the photo radar, the Alberta government. They just got rid of it, didn't like it, didn't think it was, thought it was an infringement on people. Stupidest thing ever. You speed, you get caught, you get fined, whatever. That generated $150 million. That's the kind of value we're talking about. You can get the same money out of photo radar that you can coal mining. Like, it's ridiculous. So that's where there's, there's no money in this, that taxes are minimal, even with the Crow's Nest Pass, having the infrastructure, but for the mine itself, the taxes go to the empty arashlands, who's vastly opposed to this mine. So there'll be a little bit of tax that goes into the Crow's Nest Pass, not enough to make any significant. And there'll be a handful of jobs that, and they're temporary jobs, maximum tenure of this mine is, what, 25 years? That's if it keeps going and everything goes smooth and you continue to get the quality of coal you need and the coal prices stay where you need them, meaning to make the, to make the, the business viable. So at the end of the day, like, it's, there's just so much risk attached to this. And I don't want to see our southern Alberta turn into what we have at Sparwood, all up the Elk Valley. I don't want it to turn into what you see at Hinton Grand Cash. I'll fight till I'm dead against this because I don't want my kids to be fighting this, this either. And I, you know, Mike, I'm, I'm sorry, but you know, our answer is no. And I would honestly just prefer you pack up and head her home. I really would. But I know that's not, I know that's a pipe dream. So that's my spiel. And you know, here's, here's the other thing about when I'm talking with Danielle that drives me nuts, and Brian, is that, you know, well, we have regulations and they have to meet these regulations. If they don't, you know, we'll deal with it. Well, the problem is, is that once you don't meet the regulations, it's too late. The mine's gone, everything's, like, you can't rewind this thing. Right? So it's like the biodigester that's slated to go in west of town here. Well, you know, if the, if the biodigester goes in and doesn't work, you can just shut it down, tear it out, and, and go back to farming that, that land. You, you can't do that with, you can't just shut down a coal mine and just, you know, take the infrastructure out and we're good. Tent Mountain leaches selenium today from the mine that operated 50 years ago. It's causing problems today. So you cannot, once you start this, you cannot rewind it. And it's mind-boggling to me. I don't get it why, well, I do know why Danielle wants to do this, but it's not for the betterment of Alberta. So I'm going to end there. I'll open it up to any other councillors that have, that have questions. But, and I'm sorry, I know some of you in the public are wanting to chew on this as well, but today's not a, today's not a town hall or anything. It's, but I appreciate it.
No, and I appreciate your comments. And you know, I, I too would like to thank you for the meeting we had a year ago with Michael. You made your points pretty well-known then, but you treated me with respect. And even though we agreed to not agree, it was a good discussion. And I, I thank you for that, and I thank you for this. The one thing I will say is that I can say on behalf of the company that we have no interest in those other projects. I can tell you that from the company. Take it as you will. But that is, we definitely are interested in Grassy. The company bought it back in 2019, but we have no interest in the other projects. Thanks, Mike. We'll stay in touch. Oh, sorry. Oh, Nychuck.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate the time. I'm not going to reiterate everything that Mayor Snodgrass said because I mirror it 100%. You did mention a dot org site, and I just went to it really quickly because even though my sentiments don't mirror yours, I still like to learn. So can you give me that? I took it as M A M C dot org, and I didn't get that right because it took me to an American mathematics.
November Alpha, Mike Charlie. So at northamericanmetalcouncil.org. And there's a, there's a tab on there just called Selenium Working Group.
Thank you. Sorry.
It'll keep you up. There's a lot there.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's lots there. I, I
You guys have my email address, so I'm happy to sort of synthesize it a bit to help you out, and then you can really dive into it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Again, appreciate your time today. Thank you very much. And I just don't want to repeat things Craig has said, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Dana. The next delegation we have is from Can Pathways. Harpreet and Sham.
Craig, sorry, I'm going to leave some cards
Yeah.
here. And if anybody in the audience would like to send me
Sure, just, actually, give them to Michelle over at the far table there. Thanks, Mike.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. We would like to thank Town Council for having us here today. I would like to start with brief introduction about ourselves and our company. Myself, Harpreet Core, I'm the Director of Can Pathways Immigration and Recruitment Firm based in Calgary. I have with me here Mr. Sham Parak, who is the Managing Partner at Can Pathways. Along with him, we have Mr. Muso Dabula. He's a Business Development Manager with Can Pathways at the moment. Can Pathways specialized in healthcare recruitment across Canada. We have been helping Canadians with immigration and recruitment needs. We also help with the, filling the skilled workforce labor gap across Canada. Our focus pivoted to healthcare, especially for general physicians, considering the current need we have in Canada. Right now, more than one in five Canadians, which is approximately 6 to 6.5 million Canadians that don't have family physicians, and they are struggling to find right healthcare. I would have Mr. Sham Parak continue with the, with the presentation of how we can offer our services to the town and how maybe we can collaborate with the potential opportunities to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you again. I think we'd like to go to the next slide if it's possible. Thank you. So I think we're going to keep it very short here today from our side, and we'll have, like, you know, time to answer any questions if you have. So as Harpreet mentioned, that we all are facing, it's needless, needless to say, like, the healthcare shortage and problems that we have in all over Canada, not just in Alberta. So with our own experience, So with our own experience, we have decided, like, you know, what we can do, what impact we can make to improve healthcare in Canada. So we started with recruiting general physicians and paving the way for them, for their licensing need, whether it's Medical Council of Canada or CPSA College of Physician and Surgeon of Alberta. We understand their process, and we help the doctors from approved jurisdictions, such as UK, Ireland, USA, Australia. And we approach them, and we find out who is like interested. We try to kind of like, you know, sell our Canada, our, like, you know, our country, advantages of shifting here. And we get them to move here as well. And we help them with all the licensing process. So currently, we are helping the private medical clinics to bring GPs in Calgary, Edmonton, and like other cities. But at the same time, because we are not just doing this as a business, we're trying to help the community. And we see a big, huge need in rural as well. And any doctor that we talk to, it's really, like, for them, it's like, they're very attracted towards either Calgary or Edmonton. But we find, like, we find it's challenging for the, like, to place them into rural community areas, like, or something outside the metropolitan. So today, we are here to discuss, like, basically, we are, what we are looking for, however, if like, you know, if the council is interested, we can definitely discuss about, like, what we can offer anyone who is moving to High River, such as, like, any incentives for doctors, just for our retentions. Because, as I said, like, you know, for us, like, whatever, right now, we have clinics that is waiting for doctors. And we are building a team to create a bigger pool. Our goal today for 2025 is to bring at least 200 doctors across Canada. And out of that, we're trying to find out, a lot of people, they like peaceful living, and they don't want the urban, like, you know, lifestyle. So we can pitch them, we can present them, High River or any other, like, community outside the metropolitan. So I think, yeah, so that's what we are doing. And we do have a lot, like, you know, as I said, like, it's very easy to place doctors in metropolitan. But we are here to learn and this, and present it in front of you all, that if we see any opportunity or like any incentives that we can offer. And beside that, quickly, I'll just give you a little brief as well, that we also bring investments too. So we do have overseas investments that, like, you know, we help them invest, help them come to Canada and invest their money. So currently, we don't have big tickets, but like, somewhere from, like, we help them half a million to a couple millions investment. And if any, we find any doctors, we, like, if they come and if they like the community, we help them, just invest them and build a clinic and settle into that community as well. So basically, this is what we do. And as at Can Pathways, we have, we've been doing this recruitment for more than five years now. We understand that healthcare is regulated. There's a lot of regulations into that. Harpreet has a background of nursing as well. And since we've been working with IRCC and ESDC very closely for the last five years. So we understand what they are looking for. So what we try to do is any employers or any, like, any community that are looking for certain, any, like, whether healthcare aid, nurses, or doctors, we try to pave the way for everyone and make it seamless for them. So that's what we do, I guess. And now, yeah, thank you again for your time and today. And we look forward to bring doctors or any healthcare professional, if there's any need in High River as well. And I'll leave the floor open for any question or questions that you have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Harpreet. Thanks, Sham. Questions from council. Counsel Nychuk.
Thanks, Mr. Snodgrass. Thanks for coming and presenting today, guys. Appreciate it. You said you've been in business for five years. Can you give me an idea on how many physicians you've placed, and then the retention rate on those physicians into the, I guess, urban areas? It doesn't sound like you've been very successful in rural areas, but placed and then retained? Can you give me some idea on that? I know it's your business, but round numbers would be nice to understand, kind of your success rate. I understand it's very difficult to come as a doctor into Canada and be licensed and placed. So there's a bit of a follow-up question to that. But let's, let's start with what you've placed and what's been retained so far, if you don't mind sharing.
Definitely. So for doctors, I would say we started in, like, you know, December 2024 and January 2025. And because we were doing nurses and like, you know, other industries, trade workers. But for doctors, I will say, like, they want to, basically how it works, like, for anyone, any medical clinic that we've been working with, they, we process their LMIA, and we bring doctors for two to three years of work permit. They come, and if they like it, they like to get settled. But like, so with the trend, what we have, like, you know, trying to find out is, when, when we try to tell them for rural, so they're looking for incentives, basically. Even in Calgary or Edmonton, we have clinics, they are fighting for doctors right now, because clinics are being shut down. They are not able to operate, because the doctors are retiring, and they don't have new doctors to fill. So with our increasing pool, like, we are into, like, you know, early stage to expand our network. But with my team, business development team that are working on, like, we do have traction to get more than 200 doctors this year. So far, if we talk about numbers, we have brought six doctors this quarter, and we have more than 50 doctors in pipeline. So what happened, the moment we find, number one, approved jurisdictions, doctors, and then we have to find their interest if they're willing to move. So let's say if they're in UK or Ireland, they just have, they have to go through MCC and CPSA, call exam, basically assessment. It takes somewhere from three to six months. So if I'll say I have 50 doctors right now, so we are on a, like, timeline of three to six months, where they have CPSA ready. Once they have CPSA ready, and once we have a clinic, they are ready to sponsor them. We do their LMIA. It takes like somewhere from 60, 60 days to get their LMIA. So we do this process simultaneously. So we have a clinic, and we have the doctor, once we have the doctor CPSA, we get them interviewed with the clinic, and then we bring. So coming back to, like, you know, your question, I guess, the numbers for Calgary, like, people are excited for, like, people already, because whoever is in UK, they have kind of been already visited Canada. So they get excited about Calgary or Edmonton. But the first question they ask is, most of the doctors, they have kids, they have family. So what's in there, what's in town, like, how it's like, the education is going to look like for my kids, and how's the, like, future is going to look like, the housing, surrounding, their lifestyle. So these are the questions they ask. So we, when we started discovering, a lot of doctors, they are into their kind of retirement age, and they want to settle somewhere that, like, where they can retire and, like, you know, serve the community for five, 10 years, or like, maybe longer. But they don't want to move around a lot, because they already have spent a lot of time in their career, and then they are in UK. So now they want to make it a final move. So that's where we wanted to meet towns and find out that whoever is interested to come here, or like, from both sides. If we have need here, and we have a lot of pool, doctors into a pool, then we try to convince our doctors that look into these communities. These are the attractions, like, you know, these are attractive things that we have. But yes, like, we have, I think, four or six doctor, I think, that we have landed already here, that we started from December. And we are kind of like, of all these 50 retained doctors that we have, the moment they have CPSA, we do have clinics ready here. So in the next quarter, we're gonna, like, jump from four to six to 50 plus. Yeah. Yeah, that's, I hope I have answered the question.
I guess, if I can follow up with a question, though. You mentioned, in what you just said, doctors that are established already, that have been serving in their role as physicians and looking for the next step in their career, and talking about doctors that want placement for, I think you used the word retirement.
Yeah.
And looking at a five or 10-year window. I think a community like ours, in the situation in Alberta right now, we are looking for doctors that want longer-term placement, because otherwise, we're gonna end up in the same place in five years that we are right now. So we'd be looking, if you're recruiting, and you're looking at rural, to serve rural areas, I think, you know, your best to prospect with doctors that are looking to establish themselves for a career basis, meaning 15, 20, 25 years, not the people that are at the end of their career and looking for a nice place to retire. I think, as a community, I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak for every councillor here, for our community in whole, but I, I believe that we want doctors that are looking to make a home for a longer period of time than, than a five or a 10-year span. There's a, there's a need right now. I'm not saying we turn it away, but ideally, we'd like people that want to settle in the community for a long period of time.
No, definitely. That's like, that's very valid, you know, statement. What I'll say, our first goal right now is to get at least access to the healthcare, where like, I'm not sure, like, we still want to learn the condition in High River, but we, we know there's a lot of communities, they don't have, like, you know, doctors at all. There's a lot of areas that is underserved. So like, I understand when we, when a doctor, they become a family physician, they want to be the long-term. But to start with, we'd like to focus on both. But first priority is to provide the access to the care, so people, they don't have to wait. And when they need a doctor, there, there is a doctor available. And two, then we will start to, like, you know, basically find out that if we can find the doctor, we can displace them into that community. Because Calgary, it's, I understand, like, even if they move around, they are going to be there. And there's always a risk when the doctor comes here. They're coming here in two years of work permit. Once they settle, they try to find their own establishment, own practice. There's some risk, definitely. But, but what we're trying to achieve is, at least we do have doctors. And we started, you know, reducing the wait times, as in, a lot of clinics, when we call for, can we see, can we come and see a doctor today, they say, well, number one, they're not taking walk-ins after 1:00 PM or certain time, or sometimes they're not even taking walk-ins at all. Number two is, like, you know, you, you end up going into emergency sometime, like, after certain time, like, and for small stuff, because if people are panicking about their health, then they just want an answer from doctor. In emergency, we have seen the wait line for like, you know, six hours, eight hours is very common in Calgary. So these are things we're trying to eliminate with our goal. At the same time, we're trying to build something that we can develop, not just Calgary or Edmonton, if we can do some impact into suburb, like, you know, out of these metropolitan as well. So that's our goal is, yeah.
Jenny, you're good?
I'm good, yeah.
You're good. Okay.
I'm wide open to seeing what, what you guys can do. And I guess, you know, the next step would be, obviously, you get paid for your services to sort of see financially what, what, what a quote looks like and what options we have, just to kind of move to the next phase of consideration. Because in the last two months, we've had two more doctors shut down their practices in High River, to a total of 1,000 people that are currently without a family physician in High River. That's just in the last two months. So, yeah, we're doing a lot of work with, with our current doctors. Are you guys working with any of the other medical centers in town, like, with the big ones, like Pinnacle or Evolution?
No, not in High River yet, because, like, as I mentioned, that because, like, we do have so much demand in Calgary. I looked up, and however, I think Pinnacle is looking for a physician right now, GPs, sorry. So that's like in Okudoks and High River, they both are, so far, they have posted one physician each location. So, yeah, I see there is a need.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a need, and it's going to get greater.
Right, yes.
And I, I want to talk more, because I want to know how you recruit a doctor into this current environment that our provincial government has created, and not really valuing our doctors. So especially new ones, to get a practice up and running that are under 500 patients. But I could go on as long with that one, as long as I did with coal. So I'll spare everybody this one. So we'll, we'll move on to the next, the next, the next phase here. So if you want to stay in touch with Chris, I guess?
Yeah.
So you start with, stay in touch with Chris, and then we'll maybe have you come back to another committee of the whole. With something. Okay?
Perfect.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah. Anything else?
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Give them a heimlich.
United Way. Hi, Shelley. Hi, Glenda.
Hello.
Four years.
Hi, how are you? Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks so much for having us out today. I'm going to allow, not allow, but I'm happy to have Glenda here to present our presentation today. But before I do that, I just wanted to just make a quick comment, and that is, we got Volunteer Week coming up. And what people don't know about Glenda, perhaps, not only is she the Chair of our United Way High River Partnership Committee, she was a councillor a number of years ago. She is also on the committee with the hospital board, with the hospital foundation, and with the River City Car Classics. And so when we give out money to the community in this particular program, just a good reminder that these are community members giving out money to the community and doing this investment. So a shout out to Glenda and to the whole committee. So thank you, and I'll pass it over to her.
Is that the live one?
Yeah.
I guess it is. Your worship, Mayor Snodgrass, council, town of High River staff and guests. My name is Glenda Cuffforth, and I'm the Chair of the United Way High River Partnership. Shelley Coote from the town of High River is accompanying me today. I will ask that if council has specific questions regarding the individual community grants that have been presented to you, that you please refer your questions to Shelley, because she is the most familiar person with the grant application process. You have in your package copies of the applications that were made to the United Way Funding Committee. After great review, we have, I'm going to go through what we have decided to give each group. $10,000 to Boys and Girls Club of Foothills for Youth, which provides a safe, supportive place where children and youth can experience opportunities and develop confidence and skills for life. $8,000 to Inclusion Foothills provides support to individuals with pan disabilities. $10,000 to High River Food for Thought for Student Lunch Program in all the schools located in High River. $8,000 to Wild Rose Community Connections for Food Connects and Food Security for Citizens of High River. $7,000 to High River Performing Arts Foundation for their summer circus program for the High River youth. I can hardly wait to see this, actually. $12,368 to No Student Goes Hungry Program. This program is evenly distributed to all the schools in High River for their breakfast programs. I want to advise you of a significant donation by the good folks of River City Classics and Emmons Garage Historical Society. They donated $5,000 from their proceeds of the 2024 Third Annual Brian Chipchay Show and Shine, directing their donation specifically to this program. We are indebted to their hard work and tireless dedication, trying to make our community a better place to live and raise our children in. They believe no child living in High River should ever go hungry. While I'm mentioning groups that help and assist with donations annually, I want to bring to your attention the staff who work for Western Financial Group in our downtown branch. They donated $1,880 in 2024 with similar donations during the past, several past years. We cannot thank Linda Holmes and her staff enough for their dedication to United Way High River Partnership. We received the proceeds from their bake sale, always hosted on the Friday and Saturday of Victoria May Long Weekend and Little Bridges Parade. Please keep this in mind as Little Bridges and their parade advances. Western Financial Group staff literally bake and make money to donate to us one cookie and one cupcake at a time. Please support them, and in doing so, it supports us. By donating to United Way, you do not have to have one non- By donating to United Way, you do not have to have one nonprofit group that you support, but you support several, as I have listed above. It shows us how much the community pulls together, giving hand up, a hands up, to those in the community less fortunate. Two years ago, our High River Partnership members decided to host a Bunko Night in May. What is Bunko? It's a crazy game with dice, where it is possibly better having little knowledge how to play the game. You put a number of women and wine and dice together, and you get a lot of laughs and a lot of fun. For 2024, we, our little group of members, were able to raise over $4,000 doing our Bunko Nights. Yes, we had a fall, we added a fall event, which was even more profitable than our spring Bunko. I want to talk to you for just a moment about the small group of members. Shelley Koot, our Director, Marion Benz, Cindy Donnelly, Bev Dunham, Carol McLeod, Janelle Richardson, Orvala Small, and two new additions, Linda Colly and Lorna Pozoli, plus myself, we round out, not a large group, but we're a mighty group. It is as easy as having a small amount taken from your paycheck monthly, or writing a check payable to the Town of High River. Any amount over $25 will receive a tax receipt. The total listed for the 2025 grants is $55,368. Our annual funding from Calgary and area United Way was $44,537. Some of those funds, as I already mentioned, come from the citizens of High River, donated through their employment directly to the High River, United Way Partnership. Our local funding efforts for the 2024 resulted in a total of $10,831. While fundraising efforts still remain below pre-pandemic rates, our committee did see an increase in 2024. Before I leave the subject of funding, I want to mention that we received funding requests for $87,231. When you only have $55,368 to give out, we had some very, very hard discussions and decisions to make. I must admit, in my 18-plus years of doing this, the 2025 funding was the most difficult. I'm sure I'm not alone in making that statement. Those on the funding committee were tormented, who to give the funding to. Unfortunately, two groups were not successful this year. The needs in High River have never been greater than they are today. Also, in 2024, the United Way Committee successfully hosted the grand opening of the Brian Perry Youth Park, located across from Highwood High School, in the location of the old putting greens, with the Perry family in attendance. The mayor and council joined us for celebration of one man's dream, to help the youth of our community, Brian Perry. I would be remiss if I did not mention the hard work of Shelley Koot and her amazing staff. I also want to thank the United Way Committee. They continue to astonish me with their continued drive to make High River a better community to live in. Many have volunteered 20-plus years, and some have even more. United Way Partnership started in 2005, but as far more than we can, as far as we can find, grants were not given to the High River nonprofits until 2007. I want to give you a thought before I leave, that will make you stop and think, that one group with big goals, and what they can do for our community, through the United Way Partnership and High River's efforts, over a million dollars, has been donated to our community nonprofit organizations and High River's most vulnerable in the last 18 years. Thank you to Town Council and Town of High River for their continued support of High River, United Way Partnership. We can truly say that every dollar stays in High River, thanks to your continued support. It is greatly appreciated and essential to all the agencies that we support through the grant funding process. I hope council will look favorably on our presentation and grant the funds accordingly. Thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Glenda. Thanks, Shelley. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Well, I thought you were going to read the list for me again.
I would love to.
I can do that. I can give you a break, unless you really want to, if it's, if you're excited, then here, you lead, you read your list, then.
Be it resolved. Is that the one? I think so.
You just read your list.
All right. The United Way High River Partnership Investment Committee recommends the following recommendation, that $10,000 go to the BGC Foothills Club, $8,000 to Inclusion Foothills, $10,000 to the High River Food for Thought Committee, or Limited, $8,000 to Wild Rose Community Connections, $7,000 to the High River Performing Arts Foundation, and $12,368 to the No Student Goes Hungry Program.
Thanks, Shelley. Any questions from council? I will ask for a motion from Councillor Barton, that council approve the allocation as recommended by the United Way High River Partnership Investment Subcommittee of the 2025 United Way High River Partnership, community grants with funding to come from the 2025 budget of $55,368, as which was just listed by Shelley. You have a motion, Mayor? Yep. All in favor? Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Glenda.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bunko.
May 1st. If you have any ladies, Ladies Bunko, May 1st. Tickets are at Sheena's.
Whoa.
Are you ready for a men's Bunko?
Sounds like fun.
Sponsorships are welcome.
Community Vitality recommendations.
Kathy? Awesome, thanks very much for having me here today, and firstly, I would like to thank council and, on behalf of the Community Vitality Committee, council and staff for their ongoing funding commitment. Any requests over $2,000 are required to come to council for their approval, and I have two requests today. Both of these meet the requirements of SEVAC and received unanimous support from the committee. I'm going to go out on a limb and assume that you have all seen the amazing tree art project in George Lane Park. The first, yeah, you got that back there, didn't you? The first tree was funded in 2024 through a request to SEVAC with council's approval. At that time, the initial request had come in for two trees, one in 2024, 2024, and one in 2025, but at that time, the committee chose to fund only the 2024 tree, with the intention of the second tree coming back for review and approval in 2025. And that brings me here today, requesting your support for a second tree. I think that we can all agree that Jared did an amazing job, and that this project exceeded our expectations, and is a meaningful and impactful way to bring new life to our aging trees in our magnificent George Lane Park. I'm asking council to approve $6,250 from the SEVAC fund to further support the George Lane Tree Art Project. In addition, growing and evolving an organization comes with its challenges, and often, a helping hand is required to get over the hump that it takes to take that organization to the next level. I'm talking about the incredibly successful Gift of Music organization that has been bringing world-class classical musicians right here to High River, sometimes, literally on their way to or from Carnegie Hall. In addition, they have school programs, master classes, and outreach performances. After 17 years of dedication, artistic director Michelle Wheatley-Brown is stepping away, and a new person will soon step in to this much-evolved role. The Gift of Music Board has recognized that this situation comes with an opportunity to take this organization to another level. This one-time funding request will assist in this transition by providing the new director the technical tools, office supplies, that they need to do the job. The group will engage human resources assistants to establish a solid contract and policies to take them into the future, and will provide funding to allow for there to be crossover with both artistic directors for a period of time, leading to a much smoother transition. This is an investment in the growth and the future of this uniquely High River organization that will ensure the gift of music can be enjoyed for years to come. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and to thank Michelle for bringing the gift of music to life, and her dedication to bringing exceptional music to us. I ask council to consider supporting this request of $10,000 from the Community Vitality Fund. And I welcome any questions.
You're good, aren't you?
Try to say no.
Just so the daughter of an auctioneer. Trust me, I'm married to one. You are solid, gooey. Questions from council? Nychuck.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Kathy.
Hi.
Question in regards to the gift of music. That looks like it's a consulting fee. I guess where my head was going, this isn't a continual ask for a paid position. It's, your language was very much, this is one time. Reading through the material, I kind of waffled around that, whether it was one time or not, and just wanted to think about that kind of going forward with SEVAC, the funding model that council provides, and what that may or may not mean for the future and the funds that we that we put in there. So I just wanted that clarity to make sure I understood it.
Yep, we had a really lengthy discussion about this one, and and asked for lots of clarification, so there is the solid costs of 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 needs, technical needs, office supplies, and then there was the HR consulting fees that will help them kind of establish those documents that they don't have, and to ensure that they have everything in process moving forward with this new employee model. And there is also Michelle's time that obviously isn't in their budget, so they can have a crossover, and they assured us it was a one-time. Yes, yep.
Councillor Walsh.
Thank you, and thank you, Kelly, for your, Kathy, for your incredible presentation. My question is much along the lines of Councillor Nychuck's. My past experience with SEVAC suggests that we don't support operational things, nor wages or purchased assets. So by your reply, you've checked all those boxes?
Okay, we, I will refer to Justin, I'm not sure that I recall operational costs being a part of what we are restricted, but like I said, we did debate at length that there is wages, in a sense, the consulting fees, but in a, we really felt that in order for this organization to take advantage of this opportunity and to grow, that these funds will allow them to do that, and so we decided to support this initiative.
Thank you for your clarification.
I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Jones, that council award $10,000 to the High River Gift of Music to support their transition to new artistic director.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
All in favor? Carrie? And I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Nychuck, that council awards $6,250 to the High River Art Committee to fund a second tree in George Lane Park.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Northeast Area Structure Plan along 112th. Nellendu.
I'll be presenting on behalf of sir, so, good afternoon, Mayor and the council. I'm here to present the Northeast Area Structure Plan and Functional Servicing Report, Consultant Selection. The northeast land west of the 112th Street was annexed, it was drawn on January 1st, 2012, and 112th Street land was annexed on January 1st, 2021. These areas currently lack the Area Structure Plan and Functioning Servicing Reports, and are not connected to the town services. The town has decided to take on, take the lead on these projects to ensure timely and comprehensive planning, to meet all the town CMRP requirements. On January 8th, 2024, the committee of the whole director of the town to undertake ASP and FSR projects and rebuild the 112th Street landowners for full cost. On February 26th, the council mandated that no subdivision or development permit applications for these properties within 112th Street be accepted, except the temporary use or minor development, until the ASP or FSR are adopted and subsequent land, land use bylaw amendments are passed. Next slide, please. So the council directed the administration to post RFP for the project, six proposals were received, and after an internal review, V3 Companies of Canada was found to have the most advantageous proposal. V3 quoted $248,000, $233.50 excluding the GST. Additionally, earmarking of $5,000 for miscellaneous costs such as venue booking, refreshments, and advertising expenses is recommended. Each property owner will be responsible for their per hectare share of the project costs. The project area has increased from 91.1 hectare to 294.89 hectares. The town currently owns 6.55 hectares of the land in the subject area, and the town will be taking responsibility for the cost associated with that land by covering the cost of administration time associated with the project. So the total project cost is $253,000, $233.50, resulting in $878.25 per hectare. Upon council's approval, administration will enter into a contract with V3 and finalize the cost-sharing agreement with the property owners. The agreements will be registered on property titles to ensure responsibility for the costs until fully paid, and the project will then proceed with a COCOF meeting. I kindly request the council to provide that direction regarding the awarding of the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Nellendu. Councillor Kinghorn.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass, I have a couple of questions for administration. One is, have we worked with this V3 Companies of Canada in the past? Their quote is quite a bit less than the others, and I want to make sure that we're going to get something that's going to work for us.
We have not worked with V3 before, yeah.
Pardon me?
We haven't worked with V3 before.
You have not worked for, did we get some references or anything like that, or? Sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yes, we haven't worked with V3 companies in the past, but normally, in, before we select a consultant, we do reference check. So we've checked with a few municipalities that they've done some projects with them, and we've received excellent reference.
And so you've received good references from?
That's right.
Okay. Second question, now, we got the 878 per hectare. If a person was to sell off 10 hectares or a small portion of their property, are they required to pay that immediately? Am I being clear, like, if they divide part of their land off and they sell off 10% of it, or 15% of it, does this caveat ensure that we get our money on that portion that they've sold to somebody else?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And Halleed, you and I have talked about this a number of times before, but the landowners along 112th that that we started this process with, like, it's fantastic that we've got this whole section involved in this ASP, the bigger chunk that you can have involved, the better. But I just want to make sure that those landowners, the amounts they were going to pay for this, that amount is not going to increase, correct?
Yes, you're right. In fact, they're going to be way less than what they were going to pay.
It'll drop.
It will drop a lot more than before.
Okay, perfect. Questions I have? Questions I have? No further questions. I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Kinghorn that council award the ASP and Functional Servicing Report Project to V3 Companies of Canada in the amount of $248,233.50 excluding GST, and the council also earmark $5,000 to the project to cover miscellaneous costs that the town will be responsible for, including but necessarily not limited to venue bookings, refreshments, advertising expenses for the project, and that the 2025 budget be amended to include the ASP FSR project fees as outlined above, and that staff finalize the cost-sharing agreements with the owners incorporating the project fee into their cost-sharing agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have the motion?
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Awesome. Thanks, Nellendu. Council Chamber Chairs. Hi. Really? Really?
Figure I may as well sit over here because I had to get up to move the chair anyways. So, good afternoon, Mayor and council. Today I am presenting an option for new council chairs and our joint council chambers, which we share with Foothills County. The ask is for 10 chairs to go along the council table where you are all sitting, and eight chairs for presenters that sit along here, and then staff that sit at the sides. The selection of the chairs for council chambers is a joint effort between Foothills County and the town. The project has been led by the county because they are working on a chair replacement program for all of their staff. The advantage to having the council chairs included in the county's chair replacement program is that the bulk order discount has been applied at 55%. This allows us to get sturdier chairs that are expected to last a long time. The current, well, you're not even in the current chairs. The former chairs were starting to wear, the arms were starting to fall off, we weren't able to repair them, so that's why it was finally time to look at replacing those chairs. The town did provide the county their preferences. We had a few chairs here that one day that we got a chance to look at, sit in, give some feedback. However, the county was the one that did make the final decision on what chair was selected for your review and approval today. Also, in your report, the amount that's asked for is $13,774.20. That was a calculation error on my behalf because I assumed it was going to be a 50-50 split. However, the county does have a slightly higher portion, so the final number is going to be $12,422.52. In the report, it does mention that it's going to be funded by the Tax Stabilization Fund. This fund had approximately 1.7 million that remained before the reserves were collapsed and then split into a capital reserve and an operating reserve, which was when the reserve policy came forward, November 25th of 2024. Does council have any questions or comments regarding the council chairs?
Well, I know Nychuk sat in one for about four hours the other day. Didn't get a single cramp. So I'll take his recommendation, seems to like it. Any other questions on the chairs? Do we have to use the headrests?
Oh, I should have mentioned that the headrests are only for the council table chairs. They will not be on the chairs that are here for site reasons. They will only, they won't have that extra little headrest piece, so.
Cool. I don't know where to go from here. I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that council approved the purchase of new chairs for council chambers at a cost of, can you redo that first number? I got the second one, the 12, 420.
Yes, it is $12,422.52.
Okay, so I'll redo that. Ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that council approved the purchase of new chairs with the town being responsible for 50% of the total cost at $12,422.52, the $12,422.52 to be funded from the Tax Stabilization Fund. And further, that administration advised Foothills County to proceed with ordering the new chairs for council members, presenters, and staff.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? CCMC HVAC system. Jody?
Yes, so I will stay here for this next one as well. So as council recalls, at the end of 2023, the town took over as landlord and the full property management, which fully began in 2024 because we took possession December 28th, 2023. During that full year of operations, administration has learned there is significant wear and tear that is currently happening on the chiller because of the current design of the HVAC at the CCMC. After a mechanical system review by an engineering consultant, there are a couple of issues that are recommended for improvement of the Charles Clark Medical Center HVAC system. The chiller in its current design of the HVAC runs for the majority of the year, even when temperatures outside are well below comfortable temperatures inside the facility. For instance, in January, the temperatures inside one of the tenant spaces was over 27 degrees Celsius because the chiller was down and not functioning. Typically, in winter months, the chiller, or like your air conditioning wouldn't really be running and shouldn't have impacted this. But while I am not a commercial building expert, my understanding is that right now, the system has no way to pull in that outdoor air to cool the tenant spaces. It solely relies on the chiller to cool the spaces in opposition to the boilers that are running to heat the spaces. So they're always running together, where a dry cooler would allow the system to pull in that air from the outside when temperatures are between minus 30 and plus 5, rather than having that chiller running and doing that work. The first, there are two items in your report. The second one is a gas-fired outdoor air makeup unit. This one is more specific to the ventilation at the Charles Clark Medical Center and the rate of the air turnover. The first one is the dry cooler that has a higher priority, but has an approximate cost of $110,000. In your report, it is asking for an approval at a cost of up to $121,000, and that's to allow for some wiggle room and potential responses to an RFP, that if council approves this, we will post an RFP, and then we do have some of that wiggle room to consider. However, we would be coming back for the award of that contract. Does council have any questions regarding the proposed addition of a dry cooler or the CCMC HVAC in general?
Thanks, Jody.
Not quite sure where I want to start with this.
I hope it's not technical in nature.
Oh, it's all, it's, yeah, it's all technical. So I don't know, I don't know where I'm looking. I guess I'll start with, we have a firm that helps us with the management of that building currently, right? Do we not? Do not have a property manager?
Yes.
So does this come through that property manager?
They did assist us in coordinating the engineering consultant firm that provided the mechanical system review.
Okay. Was that same firm responsible when we acquired the property?
No, they were not.
Okay. So as far as a building assessment went, where did that happen? And I know I'm kind of rewinding, going back here, but what I see here is an entire HVAC system replacement, basically, is what I'm reading into this. This is a, this is a pot pile of money. And with the purchase of the property and not understanding what seems to be that it has an entirely inadequate system as it sits, at least that's how I read this, that we need all this because the system that's there is no good. Trying to just understand how we have that fallback, and then, from what the recommendation from the property management company and what this is, I'm not an HVAC expert, so when things like this get put forward to me in council, I always take it with a grain of salt because a lot of companies, I won't say all of them because that puts them all in a bad light, but a lot of companies think that municipalities, governments, provincial, federal, we're just full of cash. And it's like, okay, throw a, throw a number at this and tell them they need all this stuff, and hopefully it's a win and we get a project. So I'm not, I'm not saying that, that there's malicious intent here at all, but this is a, this is a big pile of money in a short period of time since we acquired this, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around how we get to this place. Simply from, I guess, taking my counselor's hat off and putting a businessperson's hat on, there is a motor that failed, that wasn't working properly in all of this. Up until that point, we didn't have a 27-degree room somewhere at Charles Clark. And then I'm like, okay, we're going to fix the motor, and then we're going to keep it as a backup, but we want to add all this other stuff under the guise of, oh, there's some cost efficiency as far as operationally goes, the kilowatt-hours they referenced there, but from 53 to 6 to 6 in terms of using the, this, I want to call it an intermediate air conditioner. It's like, there's the heating, then there's this, this thing, and then there's actually the air conditioner that, yeah, I'm just, I'm really confused as to what's being presented and ultimately the cost of it, and how we go from basically an electrical motor that we're rebuilding to put back in place to a $200,000 bill. I just, I don't want people to suffer in the building. I don't want the people that rent it. I don't want the patients that go there. I don't, that's not what I want, but I kind of need some more context, at least for me anyway. Sorry if I'm asking too much, council.
So I already forget part of your first question, but what I can say is, over the history of the Charles Clark Medical Center, because we did use to occupy some of the tenant spaces, there has historically been some temperature concerns. What we can see and what we believe happened is that during the building phase of the Charles Clark Medical Center, that there may have been some downgrades to some of the system design for construction, so cutting some corners, which over the last 12 years or so have been causing this wear and tear on the existing chiller because it, I think we're probably in the same boat where I'm not an HVAC expert, but I do know enough that a boiler to heat should not be running at the same time as a chiller to cool. It should be some way to bring in the fresh air from outside, and I, my understanding is that's what the piece that is missing, that this dry cooler will then allow the air to come in. It does do some initial cooling of the air, but it's not a full-blown chiller. It's allowing some of that fresh air to come into the system, which is where there's the second issue with the ventilation, where, again, from historical, it doesn't appear that there was ever the proper pressurization in the Charles Clark Medical Center, so that when the door is open, it's not just the HVAC and the work that has been done to stabilize the temperature inside the facility completely escapes out those front or back doors. So while I don't have anything specific that points to what exactly was changed in that initial design, that's what we are believing, is that there was some corners cut in the initial costs in the building of the facility. So now, yes, there are some design flaws that require some attention. That's what your first question was, building assessment. How was that done before we acquired the space? We didn't do a full building assessment. We did do evaluation, and then we worked with the doctors' group to receive their most recent reports on the various systems in the building, so we didn't complete a full assessment prior to acquiring the facility. Does that answer all your questions? Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm dodging around Jody here a little bit. Thanks, Michael. Counselor Kinghorn?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. So if I heard you right, and if I read this right, you're just asking us to sort of tentatively approve this money, but you're going to go for RFP and then come back to us with a more detailed what the money is and total cost?
Exactly. We didn't want to proceed with anything until we had council's initial direction to proceed with this because.
Okay, and if we don't proceed?
If you don't proceed, we do now have a backup motor for the chiller because it can continue to operate how it has been for the last number of years. We do have a rebuilt motor that's functioning currently to have that chiller operate, and then the new motor, which was on back order, is expected sometime in June. So then we will have a backup motor so that with continued.
Okay, so you're not asking us to spend this money today? You just want to?
I just want to know, is this the right direction that council would like us to go in?
Appreciate it.
Knowing that there is going to be that budget impact. We would come back after an RFP for the actual contract award with the dollar amount.
Presumably after the election?
Probably not.
Appreciate the answers. Thank you.
We will guarantee that we will stick this with, stick this one to you, Kinghorn, before you leave. I've had a number of conversations with Dr. Lucky in there with the eye surgeon, and yeah, he's definitely had, had issues with, with the temperature. If you, if you try to warm up the pharmacy and he turns all, all his equipment on, like his, his temp goes to 27, 28 degrees, and he's actually had people pass out in his, in his clinic, he said. So we've got to do better. And yeah, lots of times these projects, they cut corners to try to make it fall into a certain budget, and when, when the town, the county, and the doctors put this thing together to get the thing off the ground and make it happen, and sometimes we've got to fix systems and make them better. Counselor Nychuk, back to you.
Sorry, thanks, Mr. Snodgrass. So if we're going to go for RFP on this thing, and you know, thanks for providing the context of he had patients that passed out. That's just unbelievable. We definitely don't need, want that. But is it possible to have somebody else give us an opinion? Are we just going to take this context from whoever provided this solution or, and put that to RFP? Are we going to have somebody else come in in the RFP process and go, this is our solution and this is the cost? I just trying to understand how we're, how we're going to take this from here.
That's actually a fantastic question because we did consider having a second opinion done by an engineering consultant firm. However, we were looking at $4,000 or $5,000 to have that completed. So in order to not spend money there, we figured that the engineering firm, which was contacted through EDON because the original engineer would not respond to any of our inquiries as to, can you please help us reassess the system? So yeah, we decided to just bring it forward as is. However, I don't know if there is a way to word the RFP to give them that allowance to come forward with an option. Chris can add something.
My brain hurts because if I have a problem with HVAC at the business, I don't phone an engineering firm to give me a consultation. I phone an HVAC company to come and tell me what's wrong and tell me the cost. So am I, again, am I missing something here? Are we asking an engineering firm to consult us and give us the fix, and then we go to an HVAC company and say, this is what the engineer said? Because I'm happy the engineer has a job and has a business and is making money, but I'd want to add to it for no reason.
So my understanding is that we have had the HVAC specialists on site, but that this is a specialized. but that this is a specialized system, so they can't just fix it. Chris, I don't know if you can add?
It's a three-story building.
Well, how, my understanding of how this building was originally designed was, it was meant to be a sustainable, green, net zero kind of approach. Yeah, a LEEDs building. And so in order to get, anybody to design anything requires that engineer sign off on what the air handling units would look like. Where they cut corners here, I don't, don't know exactly, but certainly using the chiller to cool instead of drawing in fresh air is not the right design system. Usually you have a separate air handling unit that will draw in cold air to temper your heated air and use it from that perspective instead of your, your, your air conditioning system. That's not LEED design technically to, to use your chiller to cool in the wintertime because you're increasing your operational costs associated with it. So this, this asked today, because it's not in our capital budget, if we want to proceed, we need to get permission from council to, that council's prepared to fund something to allow us to go up for RFP to come back to award a contract. Council still has a choice to deny the contract at a later date. But they have a choice here today to deny even going forward with this because the system can work the way it is. Does it work well? No, it doesn't work well. And so we're looking at ways to improve it, make it a better building for our tenants and making sure that they're comfortable and all their clients are comfortable. And so that's kind of the process today because it's a two-step process here. One, we have to amend the budget to put this into our capital budget plan. And two, we have to go up for RFP and bring back a contract award once we have that. So that's kind of the approach. Now getting a second assessment, we talked about that internally quite extensively here. You know, to get another engineer to, to review another engineer's work, you know, we could do a peer review, a peer assessment. Will it come back with a different approach? It may. Will it be more expensive? It may. Will it be cheaper? It could be too. But at the end of the day, we felt that the information we got in that report from this engineer was sufficient to send out for, for RFP. And to also see from those HVAC professionals that are installing like our, our heat unit here on this roof to come back with options and scenarios that may be other options that haven't been considered.
Yeah, I think that's fair that, you know, even if you have an engineering report, you get a half dozen HVAC crews in there. They're all going to have their different opinions on whether the engineering report made sense or it didn't. And there's, they always have different ways and maybe you could, maybe we could do this. But today, it's, it's, it's just giving admin direction that to proceed. I was just asking Chris as to whether we should actually have these numbers in there and does that flag for a contractor that, oh, look at how, like going along with your, your saying, you know, look at how much money they get to spend, but it is important that transparency and everything else that we have these numbers in there. Because if we look at the system that we did on this building, we did the same thing and the number still came in significantly less than what we, than what we had put in here. So these guys are all competing with each other anyway, so they're going to have fair numbers. I don't think any, you know, one might look at this and just make the bottom line, say 121 grand, but the other guys, you know, probably won't be near that. So that's, that's what we're doing today. No further questions? I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Barton that council approved the proposed work to the HVAC at the CCMC with an increase to the budget up to 121,000 to install a dry cooler that has been estimated at 110,000 and that administration proceed with the request for proposal RFP for the installation of a dry cooler at CCMC. Yeah, my motion, Mayor? Thank you. All in favor? Okay. Thanks, Jody. Live streaming committee of the whole meeting's discussion, this comes up about every six months, it seems so, as to whether, how we're doing this. So Chris, I'll let you lead this one.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. So as council's kind of indicated to me, it was one of the reconsidered live streaming COW meetings and relocating them back down to L0405. I put together some stats on our average viewership, both on the live streaming for the last 10 council, COW meetings, because they're, that's kind of when we started, but it was almost a year ago, so 10 COW meetings. As well as the viewing of the recordings and, you know, on the live stream aspect of things, like if they were watching it today, we average about 14 individuals. And on the recordings, we average about 62. Now, a caveat to that is that we don't know who that is. It could be staff members. You know, for example, I log in to check to see how the live stream is going. It also includes Kurt when he's running the live stream that, from that perspective. So we don't know those numbers all encompassing. If they're individual citizens or if they're staff members just watching to stay in tune to what's going on to see when they have to show up to, to the COW meeting or to a council meeting. So we wanted to bring those numbers here to allow council with that information to make a decision whether they do want to move again or do they want to continue live streaming COW meetings. And, and because it's kind of over a year since we started doing that move, just to have that conversation. So that's the data behind it. And we wanted to let council have that, that conversation.
Thanks, Chris. This seems to come up and it, we do live stream and then we don't live stream. We never did before COVID. It was COVID that created this, the, the live streaming thing, but the, our, our job as a council is to be able to openly vet every single possibility that's in our heads on any decision we're going to make. And have open and loose conversation and throw out crazy ideas that you might have. And, and it needs to be an environment that is loose like that. As soon as we come up here, it gets formal. As soon as we turn on live streaming, conversation is never as open as it would be if it wasn't livestreamed. Our job is to, this is the only opportunity in this environment that we have as a group of six or seven to have these loose spitballing, brainstorming conversations. This has been from day one that I arrived in 2013. I remember, I remember Peter Lorant sitting there and being frustrated going, how do we just brainstorm? How do we just, and you, because as long as there's four of us together, that's out the window. It has to come into a, into a meeting with minutes, et cetera, et cetera. So the live streaming changes that conversation and being up here changes that conversation. So I am 100% supportive of us moving back downstairs. It's still open to the public. Anybody can come and, and watch it, but I'm always focused on how does this group work together in the best environment to make the best decisions for this community, period. Any other questions? Counselor Jones, comments?
I would say I would agree that in the COW meetings downstairs, we are definitely more free to express sort of thoughts or ideas that come into our head on different topics. I know it was kind of brought upstairs during the pool to be, you know, very transparent about what was going on and what was being said. And maybe for various reasons of people wanting to watch it livestream. But I do feel it has limited some of our conversations because I do feel we get criticized a little bit more when they are livestreamed on things that maybe I think are just, again, spitballing or just ideas or suggestions rather than what actually happens because no decisions are actually made in a COW meeting. So I agree too. I, I like them downstairs. I like they're still open to the public. And if there was a, something that was, we figured would fill the council chambers, could still be brought upstairs.
Counselor Nychuk?
Thanks, Mr. Snodgrass. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to mirror those, those sentiments. I've had the privilege to be on council for a while and experience both scenarios. And there's something that's taken away, and I don't want to say just from, just from the council administration perspective, but when we have people that attend in that, in that COW setting where it's, the informality allows us to have a discussion that isn't bound by the formalities of this room of us sitting here facing each other in this context or from the public looking at us in this context. There's definitely a, there gets, I don't want to call it a wall, but being there and being here are two different environments. Downstairs, I've experienced COW meetings where we've had very open discussion as council, but it also involved the public that was attending at that time. And I don't think we're going to be any less receptive to doing that. It's not an open forum with the public, but if we have engaged residents that are there that want to bring up a question or have a comment, we've allowed that to happen. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I appreciated that because in those times that I'm remembering, it allows for very constructive dialogue to come up here and formalize the position at some point. I think as counselors, what we need to be cognizant of is not to lose that dialogue in transition from another space, being that space is in L04 downstairs. And then coming up here and making those decisions without a respectful amount of dialogue here in the platform where it's recorded and it's more formal and it's documented. I think that's our responsibility as counselors back to the public to ensure that we've engaged each other here to the same degree, maybe not with the same words or the same length of time that we did in a COW meeting in, in another venue. Yeah, that, that's my comments. I'm supportive of it and that's the context that I'm supportive of it in. So thank you.
Counselor Barton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive of us doing it. I, I, our last meeting, I think it was strategic meeting that we brought this up in, is that I hope we just have a good way of recording some of the items that, that have transpired or will transpire in those meetings. I don't agree with all of the comments here because I think some of the comments are just, they're, and only in my opinion, we're framing it and changing the way that it's viewed because it's, it's being recorded or it's not being. I can, I can be open and honest here, the same as I can be in a committee of the whole. That's my opinion. But I think just the formality of the meetings. I don't know. I'm going to leave it at that for right now. Anyways, I will support it going back downstairs until we get to the point where we have to bring it back upstairs, right? Anyways.
Back and forth. You know, Michael, you brought up a very good, very good point. Is it when it's, when we're downstairs and we're more in a, it's, it's more of a round table sort of setting than this public council. It, it, it has been a lot easier to involve the public that attend in those conversations. We've done, we've done it many times and during those loose conversations. So again, I'm, I'm always leaning back as to what, what's the best environment that we can create so that the council members that are elected by the public can have the proper conversations and make the best possible decisions we can for this town. So on that, I'm going to ask for a motion from, hang on, Counselor Walsh. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I have some mixed opinions about it. I do understand the relevance of being downstairs. The different room lends an entirely different atmosphere or environment. It is much more casual. I also share the sentiments of Counselor Barton that I will say what I think that I need to say here or there. With that being said, we came to this in recent months because we were acknowledging the concerns that we'd heard from our community. Many people were feeling unheard and they were also unable to hear us. Multiple comments about the public not hearing us debate or discuss the decisions that were made. We sat openly and discussed that. And as I recall, we all openly share our opinions, but a lot of the conversation was in fact happening downstairs in committee of the whole. It wasn't recorded, therefore people were feeling as though they were not being told everything that was happening. That's my interpretation. There seemed to be a huge trust issue there. So with that being said, I also believe that to some degree, it's a level of service that people have to have the choice. Now, with that being said, the, the residents of High River, you're always welcome and encouraged to attend the council meetings and the committee of the whole sessions in, in person. Every discussion, every decision and its impact on the community is officially documented and it's made available for you. Sometimes people just like to check in and re-watch and I can tell you that I too check in and re-watch these things because I don't always remember everything that my peers said. I'm focused on my own dialogue and what I want to bring to the meeting. So I guess going forward, all I can say is I will support the rest of council. It is the, the wish of the majority to be back downstairs where conversation can free, flow more freely. But with that, I also want to say that I assure you that my commitment to transparency and my objective in open communication stays the same. And I just want to encourage everybody here that we mustn't go back to the previous practice of all of our conversation happening in COW or committee of the whole. And that open debate needs to be happening more frequently in council. That's my opinion.
Counselor Nychuk?
So I'm unclear. Are you for or against it? Because you kind of said you're supportive of council, so I still don't get where you're coming from.
Thank you. I am in support of moving back downstairs. My caution is that we don't go back to what led us to making the decision to be here in front of council. It's a cautionary thing. Does that make sense?
Sure. I also, I also think it's the maturity of this council at this point. So, so, so to me, I look forward to the next council, not looking forward to in excitement or anticipation, but look forward to that next group that will serve the community. And looking back to when I joined council and the reservation and the experience and the time it takes to get yourself to feel comfortable. This, this from either side of the table, because I've been on either side, can be very intimidating.
Yes.
So part of why I'm saying to go downstairs is that new council that will come on, whether there's people at this table that serve again, or there isn't, or there's an entirely new slate. I think that environment for those people provides some level of learning and comfort that will be there. It's an entirely open invite. There's, there's nothing that's not transparent there. There's nothing that's hidden there. There's nothing that is not inclusive there. But I think it gives an environment to those people that will come on that may be new, maybe everybody's entirely new, lets them get their feet wet, for lack of a better term, and lets them ease into this. That's part of what I thought about when we've been talking about this, is how does that next group acclimatize themselves? Because I have seen tremendous growth in everybody here and I appreciate that. There was a lot of quiet people that first council meeting here at this table. And that's understandable. That's not, that's not a fault or a criticism. It's just the learning experience to move forward and have the ability to sit here and communicate. So that somewhat less formal transition and your formulation of question, thought, direction of where you might take your decision from your seat and then bringing it up here. And to your point, Brenda, to, to again, reiterate some of that up here is really important. So that, that captured formalized piece that's digitized now that we've all grown so accustomed to is there for people to reference. If they can't attend in person, they can look at it later or they can they can review it a year from now, or whatever it might be. So, thank you for telling me where, where your head was at, and I just wanted to expand a little bit more on why I think upcoming it's important, not only for what we do now, but for, for that next group that, that will be here in not too many months down the road, so.
Thank you very much, Michael, and I do appreciate your forward thinking. Again, I can support moving forward with my own caution.
Yeah, I think that, very well said, Michael, and, you know, the council was getting a lot of criticism during that pool discussions, about not hearing enough up here, not hearing enough with the debate and everything, and that's why we started live streaming the Committee of the Hall. And, and there has been a night and day improvement on that. You guys, everybody's contributing to every, to every meeting, and I'm, I know that'll continue, and it's like Michael said, that's a learning and growth and comfort and everything else. But the numbers just do not support, you know, if we're looking at, are we providing this as a service to the community, you know, the, the numbers just aren't there. We're averaging 14 people watching the live stream, and I, we know that there's a lot of our staff that, that are part of that, that they put it, everybody's got two monitors, so you have it on one, so that you can watch, so that you know what the discussion is. It affects them, and it affects the jobs they're doing. So, they want to know where, where our discussion is. So, 14 average viewing on live, and then only 62 for the whole, you know, for the whole video, even on, after the fact recordings, and coming back and watching that. And, yeah, sometimes it's us that go back in and watch it, right? So, I don't think there's any, any miss. I think in my mind, I will stand by it all the time, that it's a, being able to have that open, loose conversation spitballing thing with ideas, and, and it helps us formulate where we're at on certain things, so that when we come up here, we can articulate it properly, as to why we're voting one way or another. So, I'll go back to the motion. I'll ask for a motion from councillor Jones, that council direct administration to cease live streaming Committee of the Hall meetings effective May 1st, 2025, and that Committee of the Hall meetings be scheduled in L-04, O-5, beginning on May 12th, 2025, wide open to the public.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carrie?
councillor Board Committee reports?
councillor Nychuk?
Sorry, no, no Board or Committee report. Just wanted to make comment to Irene Kerr's retirement celebration that was held at Carlson's on Saturday, and well attended by the community, and just, just another, I guess, public pat on the back, thank you to Irene for all her service through the museum. And I'm, I'm pretty certain she's going to stay very involved in the community, in many ways, shapes and forms. So, I just wanted to share, it was, it was, it was a very nice evening to celebrate her, her achievements and her contributions to the museum, and, and to the fabric of what High River is, so.
Thanks, Michael. Board and Committee minutes, there are Shepherd Family Park Society Board meetings, meeting minutes attached. Public comments, anybody? Carol?
I'm sorry, I mentioned it to Chris, but not to you. Carol had some questions on the council chairs, and what we're going with the lesser cost. Oh, and the tax stabilization, how it fit into it.
So, what, I didn't get an email, but...
Pardon me? What time did I email it? I think it was around 10 to 2:00, maybe. But largely, it was about the chairs.
Okay, regardless, I don't have it, but, go ahead.
Do a demo. Thank you for allowing me to speak at public comments, Mayor and council. Jody kind of answered a lot of my questions about the chairs, but just for something that I didn't realize in the package, with this $12,422.52, that's including the 55% discount, correct? So then roughly each chair before the discount was $1,950, when I was exploring the Lifeform website.
I can say that the full invoice for the 18 chairs was $27,000 and some odd dollars, and then the county, that would have included the 55% discount for 18.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then the county would bill us, I think it's 45%, where initially in my presentation, I had 50%. Yeah.
Perfect. And you're happy with the chairs, though? Like, by whoever's demoed it?
Never saw it in one. I don't care.
No, I was just kind of curious, because with the headrest and stuff, so. Well, and thank you about that. And then I would like to speak to item 5.7, the live streaming, the Committee of the Hall meeting and discussion. Although I respect where council is coming from, kind of putting on the lens of when I was also on council, and had some feedback about, sometimes when we came upstairs, after immediate Committee of the Hall, people felt that the decision-making had largely been done downstairs. And so I would reiterate what a few of you have said, to make sure that you have fruitful conversations upstairs here. Because as a citizen watching, sometimes you can get confused, because you don't know how you've actually gotten to point B, because a lot of the point A work has been done downstairs. So just to mirror some of your comments. Also, just for example, I actually was watching the live stream today while I was doing laundry, because I couldn't come here, so it was quite handy. I personally view the fact that if you're getting around 60 views, even as re-watch, we're sure not getting 60 people up here. So, that's where I have great concerns about it going back downstairs. To speak to councillor Walsh, as an expectation of people who have elected you, of course we expect you to be open and transparent, and not be saying different things downstairs versus up here. I'm a little bit perplexed that people would feel uncomfortable up here, because the fruitful discussions, I get it, that it has a tendency at, at times to be like the public and council, but that really shouldn't be. Because council, you are our representatives, so we are all one. So if it's semantics of the layout, I don't know. And then I guess another question I would ask is, how come technology can't be put down in L-04, so that they're recorded? Because I understand, it's more comfortable down there, a little bit casual. And when I was on council, one thing that was very clear is, as councillor Nychuk mentioned, the public were allowed to speak at the end of the Committee of the Hall meetings, whereas like, I don't see an option for that, so I'm hoping that would be brought back when you're having them at L-04. So, and even just feedback, I bumped into a former councillor on the bike path the other day, and he mentioned even to me that they, when he was on council, they actually eliminated the Committee of the Hall meetings, and only had council, because of the feedback of people thinking that the decision-making, people couldn't understand how they got to the decisions they were making. So they actually completely removed Committee of the Hall, and had all of their discussions up in council. So just a little bit of feedback.
Yeah, I'll answer that last part. You said they, they got rid of that, and, and only did council meetings. That's because what they, what they went to is they had things called CAO briefs. And that's what was going on when I got here. Public's not invited. Same conversation as Committee of the Hall, public's locked out. And they call it a CAO brief, because that's how you can get around it, through the MGA, that it's just a CAO, but it's not. It's a Committee of the Hall meeting. So that's why we said none on, like, we got to open it to the public, and that's why we do the Committee of the Hall. So there's a balance to it. And as far as live streaming downstairs, yes, it is very difficult. We do not have the equipment downstairs, and it does take a lot, Carol, because it's not, it's not FaceTiming a group. You have to have proper audio, so that you can, for everybody, microphones for everybody, so that everybody can be heard clearly. You can't just put a video camera with a microphone on it and expect to hear properly. So, it's either in or out, like, look at the equipment that we've, doing us and the MD, what we've installed to do live stream up here. So, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, I, I just appreciate, I hope that you just hear my comments, because I do think it's quite a success to actually have 60 people viewing them. Because you'll never get 60 people in here unless it's a hot topic, because people have to take time off of work to come in at 1:00 or at 3:00. And, yeah, so personally, I was giving good feedback about, I really enjoyed the live streaming, even when I was first elected on council, and knew that Nanton had already begun live streaming. They had it long before any of COVID. And then during COVID, we had such great feedback, that people were appreciating the Committee of the Hall, because they were saying, now I know how you're coming to your dis, decision-making. So just a little bit of feedback of past and present. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Carol. councillor Jones?
Thanks. I just wanted to say, Carol, I'm not uncomfortable sitting up here speaking. It's just an ease of conversation downstairs, that I, I found was a bit easier. And as for the people, it wasn't 64 people looking at the live streams, it was 64 times that possibly it was looked at, by, by people multiple times, too.
Oh, I knew that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
councillor Nychuk?
That last piece was the one I just wanted to clarify on the 60, 64. I was understanding that that was actual council meetings, or was that including COW as well? Sorry, just...
No, it's just COW.
That's just COW?
That's just COW. 64 views, and like Jenny says, it could be one person watching five minutes, going out, coming back in. Like, that in and out thing, that counts for one, every single time you go in or out, right? So, thanks, Carol, though. Appreciate it. Council Correspondents requiring action, a couple of, oh, sorry, Marine, yep.
So, I'm going to be using my two-minute time of your council procedure bylaw, 16.1. On February 10th, Riley gave the report regarding the 42% of the water loss. Just like to know, hopefully at the next council meeting, you can tell us what you've been doing on that loss, how you are going to find the loss, because people are wanting to know. Have we found any of it?
Yeah, that doesn't happen in a month, Marine. Like, that's a massive, you look at our water system.
It was January 24th.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, maybe you could let us know what you have been doing on this situation, because I think that's a pretty important part.
Yeah, so the, the town has been dealing with water loss. I remember back, Les Remple as mayor, that council started the yearly, and the yearly, they would pick a, they would pick a block that was bad in southwest, was where the real bad leaks were, and tore the whole street up, and redid all the infrastructure and everything underneath to, to do that. We did that for a number of years as well, and continue to do it. But, you know, we were all surprised at that numbers, you know, we thought it was down around that 25 to 30, but, you know, Riley's saying, you know, the 42, but it's a massive program to try to find where each of those leaks are, because there's hundreds, there's hundreds of them.
I understand that. But I think people are wondering what you are doing about it since the report.
Well, go ahead, Riley. Like, this isn't, this isn't new. This is something we do on a continual basis every single year.
It's a, it's a percentage that...
Yeah, it's a percentage that, that caught you, and caught, we were surprised at as well.
Sure, thank you. So, like Craig says, it's been, sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's, Craig, ongoing issue for a number of years. We, we have been talking about what our leak detection will look like this summer, and how we're going to find it. We've changed how we approach hydrants. We're going to start, because it's not all leakage. A lot of this water is, well, how much is unknown, but a good portion of it could be just unallocated. So for example, when they do the hydrant flushing this spring, can we time how long a hydrant is on to track the amount of water being lost there? So, the, the hydrants, when they're tested, they flow quite a bit of water. So what is that quantity? That's not factored in, and would count against that 42%. And so those are some of the things we've started. Council did approve as well, for this year, a main replacement design process, which would go to construction next year. The areas we select are generally driven by condition and leaks, and so that'd be another portion of it. So that's what some of the things we've started on. The main replacement will continue, leak detection will continue. We saw some of that a couple of years ago, when we found the big leak under Center Street, in front of Sobeys there, because again, that was a condition assessment. So as we go more into asset management, and get a little bit more targeted with our leak detection, hopefully we find more and more. There are still portions of the system that are very old, and the only solution there is a lot of money. Like, when you're dealing some with this cast iron, and you're 50-plus years old, it's going to be in rough shape. We pull it out of the ground, it looks rough, and we still have quite a bit in town.
Oh, I agree. I understand that. Okay, thank you.
That's a major issue for every single community. Look at the disaster that Calgary got into last year, and luckily, our biggest main is 12 inches, 14 inches, what our mains are. Well, it doesn't matter. It's a long ways away from seven feet. So, we're not dealing with that level. We get a break. It's, it's much smaller issues, so. But you're absolutely right, Marine. It's, it's water loss, and it's treated water that we pay to treat, and, and we always want to do the best job we possibly can to find out where it's going. But aging infrastructure, and reduced grant dollars and everything else for these things, you know, to replace, to replace one block of, of, to dig the road up and replace that infrastructure's, about 1.2 now, nowadays?
Depending on your block, I mean.
Yeah, depending on, a million bucks per block, to redo the infrastructure. It's not a cheap, it's not cheap, but, so we're constantly chasing the biggest, the biggest leaks and the biggest problem areas, of course, so. Ongoing, for sure. Council Correspondents requiring action, GBS CIDP Foundation of Canada, request for municipal days of respect and support. Any comments on this one?
Ask for a motion from councillor Nychuk, that council proclaim May 1st to 31st, 2025, as GBS CIDP Awareness Month in High River, and the council authorize the mayor to sign the town of High River C, GBS CIDP Awareness Month proclamation.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor. All in favor? Carrie?
High River District Healthcare Foundation Dinner and Auction sponsorship request. This is our yearly sponsorship to that organization, and to the dinner and auction. So, ask for a motion from councillor Kinghorn, that council direct administration to donate $5,000 to be a premier sponsor for the High River District Healthcare Foundation 37th Annual Dinner and Auction.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. I'll give you that motion, because I can't wait to attend, and watch you sell potatoes.
Sell them. God.
Nobody sells if you buy them.
Yeah, I buy them, and then I sell them to the guy that snuckered me the first time, so. All in favor? Carrie? Red Dress Day 2025 letter is support, same thing that we did last year, an important cause. Ask for a motion from councillor Walsh, that council support the request to recognize Red Dress Day, and approve the hanging of red dresses, as well as posters detailing the significance of the day in George Lane Park, the morning of May 5th, 2025, to honor the memories of missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and Two-Spirit people across Canada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have my motion.
Okay. All in favor? Carrie?
A couple of pieces regarding council correspondence, and...
And this time, I will ask for a motion from Counselor Barton that council recess the regular council meeting April 14th, 2025, at 5:26 PM and move into a closed meeting.
You have my motion, Mayor. Thank you. All in favor? Carrie?
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor?[1138.79]